We'll call to order the meeting for the Lunenburg Planning Board for Monday, July 24. As a reminder, this meeting is being filmed and recorded and is available on Zoom and here at Town Hall. That's all we need to tell them, correct?
That's correct.
Great.
Recording in progress.
There we go. All right. So we will begin with public comment. Do we have anyone waiting there?
We do not.
Okay. With no public comment, we can move on to our next agenda item, an A&R plan for 828 Lancaster Ave.
Thank you. Greg Roy with Dilson Roy. I'm representing the applicant this evening. And this property is right on the corner of Lancaster Ave and Goodrich Street. And we're proposing, there's a farmhouse that exists right there on the corner. A lot of you might be aware of that property. And we're proposing to chop the house off, which is shown on the plan as Lot 1, that lot. Both of the parcels here are located in the Residence B zoning district. The requirements for that are 80,000 square feet of area. And then, I can't read the frontage, but both of the Lot 1 and the remaining land that we're showing, we both have adequate area and frontage. So that's really all. We're just proposing to cut off the house so that the remaining land, I think the intention would be to sell that remaining land to actually our client, which is Mr. Violet. So that is the long and the short of it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does Lot B have a different frontage, or not Lot B, does Residence B have a different frontage requirement than Residence A?
No.
Okay. Great. So...
100 feet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you've got 200, 400.
Plenty of frontage.
My follow-up question, if it was greater, was going to be, I thought it didn't, I was trying to remember if we could still count the wetlands in that case, and I remembered the answer likely being yes, but it doesn't matter even. Great. Any questions from the board?
No.
Just to clarify, I believe Violet owns the abutting property, so probably wouldn't even be accessing off Kilburn, but there is an existing access there, correct?
Yeah. Right. There's no, we call it remaining land because we didn't do any soil testing or anything for the, for that, because that's really not the intention at this point, was for a building lot. I'm not saying that it won't be in the future. It conforms as a building lot, but we haven't done the work required yet to do that. Really, the interest was just to purchase that property, separate from the house, so...
And it looked like the, not that, I mean, just for informational sake, the Board of Health said that that shouldn't have any issues with septic or anything.
That's correct.
Well, we did do it.
They don't make comment on whether it will have issues with septic or not.
Fair.
What they do is, when there's an existing home, they verify that if the existing home is on septic, that there is a reserve area in the, in the event of a failure and the necessity to install a new septic system at a location not the same as the existing.
That is what I meant, said far more eloquently.
We did do the work relative to the existing house on the, on the septic system Title V front. We just didn't do anything on the new, on the remaining land portion, so...
A general question, is the Title V inspection required for an A&R?
We did do it. We did an, we did a Title V inspection.
For an A&R, no, but the Board of Health can deny a lot split if the remaining house doesn't have a passing Title V and doesn't have a reserve area that's reserved within the Title V.
Is that before or after we make a decision to approve or deny?
Well, that's why we've looped them, that's why we looped them in. You know, I think that if we looked at it statutorily, each operate independently and don't necessarily have a crossover, and we've attempted in this process to ensure that we're not doing something that would be problematic for the Board of Health in the future.
Yeah. That's a great way of saying it.
We've attempted?
Well, well, you've done it. Your process is, is in place to, we have to go to the Board of Health before we can really file the plan.
I'm always going to say attempted because, you know, there's always going to be, someone's going to slip through one day and...
That's why...
The statute, I think, would require you to, would probably require you to endorse this plan, provided that it meets all your, but, but your process is a little bit overarching, more so than the state statute, partly so because there's another state statute, the Title V regulations, that, that has something to say about this process too, so...
And the Board of Health is now codified in our A&R procedure.
Right.
In the rules and regs, so...
Right.
So you... That way, I mean, I think you are correct that we, we would not be able to say no because of it, but if memory serves, we put this in place so as to prevent some nasty potential surprises for...
Well, it makes perfect sense. I mean, it's, it's the interest of everybody.
Right. Like to say, go ahead, and then have someone be like, "Well..."
Right.
Great. With, if there's any other questions, you're welcome, or statements, or if there's no questions or comments, I would accept a motion.
I move the, we approve the A&R for, it was 828 Lancaster Ave?
That's correct.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, great. We have it.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next up, we have, we are going to be continuing the public hearing for 525 Chase Road. We don't need to re, we don't need to do the whole opening spiel again, correct? Okay.
How you doing? I'm John Plifko with McCarty Engineering. So as this is a continued hearing, Brian from our office presented this plan at your last public hearing, and it was not, we continued to this meeting because the review engineer hadn't had a chance to review it and provide comments. So we did receive a comment letter today from Graves with some minor comments that we more than willing to address, we just haven't addressed them at this time. So I guess we'd be asking the board to approve it with the conditions of meeting the review letter.
All right. I did say, we did get this letter today in our inboxes, but enough people have had a chance to see it. If you're looking at the files...
I have a hard copy here, if that's helpful.
07.
Yeah, LPBO.
Yeah, LPBO 7, yes, that's correct. So if you, if you'll only give us a moment, we get that day, it just helps the board members, not everyone has a chance to review.
Absolutely. Yep.
There we go. So I was left with a couple of questions from Graves' review letter that I think, Adam, you actually may be the person to ask.
Okay.
Because when we get to general comments, there's a couple things that said GEI has not reviewed or did not review for compliance on some specific things. Specifically, GEI has not reviewed the floor drain system for compliance with local requirements or 314 CMR 18.00. And similarly, GEI did not review for compliance with 310 CMR 10.00, the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act regulations. I was just curious why they don't approve, why they don't review for that, or if we need to consider that, or anything?
You don't. They don't, they don't review for wetlands because they're not wetland scientists.
Okay.
And in the event that there are wetlands present that require filing, that filing would go through the Conservation Commission and would be caught prior to building permit. If the applicant's, and if I'm not mistaken, the applicant's engineer is making the assertion that because the river is culverted, that area doesn't fall within the Rivers Protection Act. And then without that, all of the work is being done outside of that, that jurisdictional area. So the Conservation Commission will review that as part of the building permit and confirm or, you know, make claims otherwise. As far as the floor drain, that will get captured as part of the building permit and is the purview of the Board of Health if they have any floor drain regulations. So through the plumbing code and the building permit process, that would get reviewed, which is why Graves doesn't, doesn't review that. It's a tight tank, it's proposed to be a tight tank, so it's watertight, it doesn't have any real impact on the site development unless, for whatever reason, they're proposing to put it in the water table, or there's some other potential impact. But I think that the way that it was proposed and designed, if those things were to come up, that would be caught through the building permit process. Do you want hard copies, Matt?
No, I'm good, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. That educates me. Great. Questions or comments from the board?
The only questions were in regards to why it hadn't been reviewed, and we've got that sorted.
Great.
So I do have a question. So if the soil testing that is suggested to be done, and as a review engineer says is required, if it fails to meet the requirements of the drainage area, what would happen to that? Would he have to come back and...
Yes.
Okay.
And is there some semi boilerplate wording we can use to...
Yeah, you know, I would suggest that, so the board did this also up at North End Subaru when they got their site plan approved, because the area where they were proposing their infiltrator in the front of the building was in the current building, and they weren't super excited about excavating the floor of their active dealership. The board, what I would suggest is, is require the soil testing and that, that testing be submitted to the board with the engineer's certification. And if it fails, then they would have to find a new place to put that, that infiltrator, and we need to make an amendment to the board.
Okay.
So follow-up question, so then we can expect to be getting a review with soil testing results from the review engineer on this?
I think this answered the questions I had. And Matt, I remember, I was sorry, Mr. Allison, I remember last week, or last meeting, I feel like you had some questions about grade. Has that all been addressed one way or another to your...
I just wanted him on record as being asked and answered.
Great. Okay. If there's no more questions or comments, I would accept, I would accept a motion to close the public hearing, so we can deliberate. Is that the right process? I think that's...
Was this 526?
525.
525. I move that we close the public hearing for 525 Chase Road.
I'll second.
Oh, did we have to ask for public comment again?
You took public comment last time, you're only required to do it once during the hearing.
And yeah, I mean, it doesn't, I don't see public. All right. Great. Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's, all right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have the letter from Graves. We have a hope from the applicant that we can approve with conditions. And do we have any other discussion of how we might want to put that together, if we do want to put that together?
I think the only, well, as far as I remember, the only condition we would have at this point is that they conform to all the, that they satisfy the review engineer's comments, right? Is that the right verbiage?
Yeah, I might recommend that since there are really two issues in here, number four and number six, that are called out, that should probably be conditioned, that we condition those two specifically.
All right. Yeah, I didn't have a question about, so I didn't know for, thank you.
And so like, so with four, it's noting that it should identify the total number of chambers proposed for the drywall. And so if we condition that there shall be six chambers for the drywall, it's just clearly called out in the decision, which the contractor's supposed to get. And then if we condition the soil testing as we discussed, again, it's just called out.
I do have a question. Why would we clarify number of chambers rather than volume?
Because the way it's designed was six chambers to cover the volume.
Well, it should have been designed as a volume they needed to accept.
Correct.
To be five gallon chambers. What use is that?
I think what, I, my understanding of the comment goes back to the call out of the specific chambers on the plan.
Site plans.
And then the way that they were applied to the calculations.
I'm just, I'm just saying that clarifying a number of chambers is useless because there's no volume per chamber specified.
Well, it's calling for an SC 740 chamber. So it's calling for, it's a specific call out for the chamber.
Okay.
And then in the calculations, it totaled out to six, but it's a standard detail, a standard construction detail, that's not out, it only shows three chambers in the detail.
Okay.
So Graves just wanted us, was suggesting that we require that they communicate to the contractor that there are in fact six chambers in the design.
He was looking for the engineer to call that out, but...
Yeah.
My feeling is that rather than relying on the engineer to put it in the plan, I think if the board puts it in the condition, it will maybe be redundant, but will also preserve that.
I might be, I think I'd prefer to, prefer to have volumetric specification as far as is required by the hydrology computations, rather than just a number of chambers. But that either way is fine. I mean, if, if Graves' review said that that six chambers of that specific type was sufficient, then I guess technically that's adequate.
Well, then we could even craft the condition, say the drywall shall have six SC 740 chambers or be equivalent to the volume as outlined in the hydrology computations.
There you go.
I like it.
So that's condition one, right? And then...
And condition two would be the...
Soil testing.
Yeah. And we'll also need to set hours too, correct?
Correct.
All right. Thoughts on hours? Do we have, and this is a commercial zone, do we have standard commercial zone? I mean, it's a, it's a busy road and...
Yeah, you tend to do seven to five Monday to Friday, eight to three on Saturdays in commercial areas.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that. It's not near a lot. It's, there's plenty of room for vehicles on the lot as well, so I'm not particularly worried about traffic on that road during busy hours.
Yeah.
Great. If there's no more discussion, then I would look for a motion. And if we're looking to move to approve, we'll want to include the conditions. Can we just say the conditions and hours as discussed, or... Okay.
Motion to approve as, as with the conditions discussed.
Is that good enough, do we need to re-say the...
Gonna fine.
Okay.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Well, that would be the end of the, the end of the public hearing and the decision for 525 Chase Road. I love checking things off. We're onto board discussions. And first up would be the Master Plan Steering Committee applications. We received two. I don't know how recently we received them, but...
One we received a while ago, and one we just got, I think, Friday.
Okay.
I stuck it in your drive, so it was there. I believe that, I believe that Mr. Reed is with us on Zoom. I know that Ms. Gilchrist is not.
I am. I don't know how to change my name, but that's a fair debate.
Did you Jerry with a J or a G?
Uh, J, it was Jerry Reed.
All right. Mr. Reed, thank you for joining us. We have your application for the, well, we don't call it a talent bank forum, the volunteer application for the Master Plan Steering Committee. What would you like us to know about you?
Uh, just to know that I have a lot to offer, economic group work, and I would like to get more involved, and this is a town I see myself living in for the future, and I just want to be involved in the next 10 to 15 years of planning, make sure that everything gets done right, and to give whatever feedback and whatever honesty I can give them. By years of experience in engineering, I have been paid to solve problems, and sometimes require out-of-the-box thinking and focus on results. For example, someone will come and say, "I want to accomplish this," but they don't know how, so we figure out how to make that done with the best practice. So I feel like I can bring all that knowledge and expertise to the town to help make the master plan and make Lunenburg the best it can be.
Very nice. Thank you for volunteering. And do we ask many questions we have? How does this...
However you can.
Great.
It's completely up to the board, how they move through this process.
So I would turn to the board and say, we have an applicant in front of us. We can make their lives incredibly difficult and grill with any awkward questions we wish and really, you know, put the nose in the fire to mix my metaphor. So what questions do we actually have, if any, for Mr. Reed?
No particular questions.
No particular questions.
Happy to have people looking to be a part of it.
Exactly. Exactly.
I'm a Bears fan, that matters, and my mailbox is low.
Thank you. I do appreciate you sharing the difficulties you face in life.
In the rough, 30, 30 years of my life.
Mrs. Reed, do you have any questions for Mr.?
Am I allowed to have questions for Mr. Reed?
Why not?
No, I don't have any. I saw him write out his application, so...
I do ask much...
My handwriting is nowhere near as good as my thinking in my mind is going out there, but I apologize for that.
I ask that as much, just so it is out there, and so there's no, so no one could question, "Oh, but I didn't know," or "You didn't say," yeah.
That's nepotism.
Yep.
Well, and the nice part is, the Master Plan Steering Committee has no financial implications on individuals or the town, so the ethics laws are less problematic at this.
I ask not so much for the ethics laws before the screaming Mimi laws, as they Great. So I will actually just observe, kind of just for the record, that Mr. Reed was at the first public forum, one of the members of the public who was at the first public forum.
I'm sorry, if I may correct you, the only member of the public that was at that group...
No, it was a second member who showed up.
Oh, who did it? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And another significant...
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
In that case, I would, if the board has no questions, Mr. Reed, thank you very much for your time, thank you for your offer, and we, do we just vote?
You certainly can.
Great. I would ask for a motion if we wish to confirm or deny him for the Master Plan Steering Committee for one of the at-large positions.
Am I allowed to?
Yes, because there's no ethic violation.
Not nepotism.
You're not, I mean, he's not going to get rich off of the Master Plan Steering Committee.
If he can get rich off the Master Plan Steering Committee, then they're...
Should hire him.
Yeah, y'all are smart.
Yeah, if anybody could, it's probably him, though. I would move to approve Gerald Reed for the Master Plan Steering Committee.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you very much for offering to help, and you're stuck here now.
Not a problem. Thank you for allowing me. I'm excited to get involved and see what, see what the future of Lunenburg holds for all of us.
Hey, great.
Excellent.
Thank you, and you're welcome to watch our fascinating meeting, but appreciate it.
I do believe I have some other errands to take care of, but thank you so much.
Thanks.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
So we did have one other applicant. Some of you guys may know her, Josie Gilchrist. She's a local business owner, she is a member of the Lunenburg Business Association, she's on the town's Economic Development Committee, generally a nice person. I certainly don't want to speak for her. I know that she has been working hard to try and solve some of the business woes that the town, I will say allegedly has, or perception-wise has. So I think she's looking to, you know, again, much like Mr. Reed, give her time to help guide the, the future of Lunenburg through the Steering Committee. If you would like me to invite her to the next meeting we have, we can do that. If you'd like to appoint her based on reputation, that's also your call.
I would just add that I, working with Mrs. Gilchrist on the Economic Development Committee, frankly, you're talking about a sharp, well-connected person who really has her, really has her finger on the pulse of some parts of the town, and has a whole lot of enthusiasm and energy, and an eye for the future. So I, would the board like to speak with her? Would we like to simply discuss and vote? Do we have a feeling on this?
I'm ready to make a motion, but...
Yeah.
She's been to the board already, then I don't see...
I'm in the same boat, but I, I work with her more than others, so I don't want to make assumptions there. I would accept a motion.
I move that we accept Josie Gilchrist to membership of the Master Plan Steering Committee.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, Josie, you're on board. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And while we're stuck on this fun topic, I received an email from the administrative, the executive assistant to the town manager. When the select board last met, they failed to appoint a representative to the Master Plan Steering Committee. That is quite the expressive look, Mrs. Reed.
It's been a long weekend.
It didn't necessarily fail, they asked us to...
Well, I was gonna say, and they have now requested whether or not...
That was at the meeting.
Oh, were you?
No, that was at the meeting.
Oh, that was at the meeting, yes. The, whether or not the board feels it needs to be a member of the select board, or whether they would accept the select board choosing a third-party representative to send, essentially another citizen at large chosen by the select board. I will say, I had a conversation with the chair of the select board today on another matter, and I may have given him a little bit of shtick about it, and...
Shtick.
Shtick. He didn't plot or anything, so don't worry. And, you know, he expressed some trepidation... trepidation about appointing new members to the master plan steering committee. And I sort of went back with the thought that one's experience in the town is less important as a representative on the steering committee when coming from another board. And the idea that it is a representative of that board who can and is at their regular meetings and is boosting the signal and giving the updates and sort of just tying the two committees together was really what the board was aiming for. I don't know if that changed his thought process at all. But i- it may be, and again, I, I certainly don't want to put words in the board's mouth, but, um, you know, i- if the board isn't, I don't want to say willing, isn't, isn't looking to change the, the charge and the membership. Perhaps, uh, being expressive about what the board is hoping for from membership from committees would be a good response.
If I can just clarify for a moment, so their, their statement is, or their idea is that, that this person is the go-between between the master planning committee and the select board.
Essentially.
Whereas what we are looking more for, what we've discussed, is integration between the two.
Okay.
I'll also add that, uh, Caesar, what is Caesar's last name, Adam?
Oh, uh, Nuzzella?
Okay, so anyways.
I may have butchered that.
I can butcher it less, maybe?
The select board's, uh, committee assignment to the planning board, uh, is, is already de facto going to be that. Um, my, my take on this, I did watch it. I wasn't there at the meeting, but I watched it. My take on this is that, that if we do change the charge, that we just remove the select board and make a fifth, uh, citizen at large that's appointed by this group.
What? Part of the idea, the understanding is that we, we want a consistent input from the select board on, in regards to like how they feel or what, what we need from them, that some kind of back and forth. If we're putting a fifth at large, there's not necessarily that same, uh, capacity or communication. Like, they, they can effectively go rogue if they want, um, to some extent or another.
All right. I, I guess I personally feel it's imperative that it would be an active member of the select board. And I, I would agree with what, uh, Mr. Bernie said in terms of, I don't think there's any harm in a newer member of a board being the representative. As a matter of fact, we are all, in fact, equally elected positions. And as board members on any of these boards are equals. And so, I, I mean, for example, we're sending Mr. Willsner, who is our newest member, as our representative to that group, and I don't see any harm or flaw in that in the slightest. But I would echo again that I think it's imperative that we have a consistent member of, of these other committees that we've asked. Both to act as liaison and to boost signal and to really facilitate that communication and bring that board's interests to the forefront. The reason we have so many people on this steering committee is there are so many groups in town that really, and by groups, I, I don't even necessarily mean, uh, elected committees, but we're in many instances using those as stand-ins for populations and sub-populations within the town because they're better to help with that. And the select board as well has a key role there, representing both the town at large and town government. I mean, we're all in town government one way or another, but those are my thoughts. I would really like to have one of them and I wouldn't mind at all if it was Mr. Nuzzolo. Or any of them.
So I'll also mention that the, our voter registration has no date on it. So member as of, you know, there is no, there is no, um, difference. You're a registered voter or you're not.
Uh, I want to editorialize a little bit on what Mr. Willsner said about the select board going rogue if they're not involved. Historically, we have partnered with the select board on some things where they have also gone rogue. So that isn't necessarily a divergent from that, but one can hope that the integration will slow that a little bit or, or prevent some of that.
I, I more meant the at-large member, uh, going rogue.
Fair enough.
I understood Mr. Willsner's meaning and I understood precisely why you were sharing that sentiment as well, Mr. Bernie. But I, I do think that this logic isn't just for the select board. I do think it holds true for any of the boards. I would really like to see them, and I think I'm speaking for the board on this, and please tell me if I'm wrong.
All of the other members that I've had sent in have been, no, no other group has asked this. They've all found a member within their, their committee to, to put forward.
And, uh, as a reminder for everyone, including the public at large, because there are still at-large seats.
We still have two at-large seats.
This is, this is the plan for the next, again, master plans are theoretically for 10 years, but they're almost universally 15 to 20 years. So we're talking about a good chunk of the future, a generation of this town, what, what that will look like. And I think it's valuable to get everyone's input here. And I don't mean to accuse the select board of trying to cop out. I actually, I understand the logic of, well, we could appoint someone that we know we work well with and that may have some more time and may have many more years' experience in town government or in the town or something else. I, I understand that logic, but it'd be nice, it would be better, uh, I think imperative to have an active member of the board.
I, I think that's really what it comes down to, is they have a lot of different positions and that they, that they participate in and, and I think some members were feeling overwhelmed and others were cautious. Which a- all makes sense.
On a personal level, I absolutely regret having, feeling that, the obligation to say, I, I think it's important you put one more thing on your plate. Cause I, I hear that as well, as an, as another member of town government who probably does not have as many obligations as so, as some members of the select board outside of my primary board that I'm on. So I hope that, I hope that comes across as well.
Is there a po- um, sorry, I'm trying to figure out how I want to put this together. Is the idea that they're putting forward that they, they say member at large, but a, an individual who is effectively like tied to the select board as like an actual go-between. Uh, like their job is to come to the, the, um, planning meetings, uh, the input, what the select board has to say, take that information back to the select board. Like a, a way to guarantee that that is what they are doing. Is that, is that to understand the kind of thing that they are looking for or is this just an open at-large position?
I got the impression they were looking for someone that was tied to the select board as their representative. But n- I don't know how you ever guarantee that person is tied to or held to the board other than being part of their membership.
Sure. Okay, that was my main question.
And again, I completely get how busy all of these folks are and how, oh, it's just one more night is like the worst thing that can, it can feel crushing.
It's the thing that drives people out of volunteering because you're burned out on all of it. Sure.
I certainly don't disagree about the burnout factor, but, um, my, I don't know how you got that impression, Adam, because my impression was they wanted to make an appointment to fill. They, they, they first they checked to see what the charge read.
Correct.
And it was a member of the select board and they wanted, they're, they're, what I remember hearing them ask for is, can we ask the planning board to make that an appointment of ours? By us. Is what I remember.
Yeah, that, yes, I agree. That's what they said. I, I guess I interpreted that they were looking for that person to be tied to them in some way as. And maybe that's my own hopeful Pollyanna-ishness.
Well, it tied to them as far as it would be their appointment.
Well, yeah.
Right. So, I mean, to, 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 to try to clarify the, the question that was asked, I, I, I think it was just a member at large appointed by the select board.
Sure.
Rather than a member at large appointed by the planning board.
Mm-hmm.
Which, you know, is a very simple difference, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, does this give you the info you need for that discussion?
Yes. I will send them a letter from the board or a memo from the board stating that you discussed it, your desire would be this. You feel that length of service is not a relevant bar that should preclude anyone from doing it. And that these are the reasons why a member of the board is the, the desire of this group and how important it is based on these factors.
I agree with that.
Cool. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that would be, um, master plan steering committee applications and a little bit more tangential to that, but relevant. Master plan, community engagement plan would be next.
That it would. So in the drive, and I put it there last week, was the engagement plan that over-under has put together for moving forward. And it just sort of outlines what they're proposing to do. I thought Matt might want to.
Thank you. Yeah.
Um, essentially, we're talking about creating a website that will be a repository for all of the meeting materials, data put together, notes, uh, surveys, all of that. It'll have a domain name similar to like planlunenburg.com or, uh, planoflunenburg, something like that, to allow folks to have one place that they can go to that's easy to access and easy to maintain by the consultant. So they can constantly be just updating it as they're getting new stuff and they're not having to send it to me to send to the, uh, IT admin to do this, to do that. We had a meeting with them today. We talked about having some nature of notification for updates and new surveys so people can sign up. So it's a, once you visit it, you can say, oh, hey, I want to make sure I, I'm up to date on everything and they're getting a handle on that. You know, get an email, oh, there's new stuff up, come check it out. Uh, and that way folks who start to really get in the groove can find one place to go and, and really feel like they're engaged. On top of that, we talked about what the timeline and work product looks like going forward. Having a, an existing conditions report for September. And having the first steering committee and then, uh, the second public forum in that same timeframe. They're building a physical model of the town and they're still sort of kicking around what that might look like, but it's probably going to be a big old puzzle that they're going to come in and slap down and put together at a meeting so people can actually look at the whole town and touch it and see it and engage with it and use it for different things. So they're really looking at trying to get people feeling and touching and being involved and, and I think that's a big part. They're planning to attend the farmer's market at some point to try and hustle people there and get them aware of it. A lot of people you're not necessarily going to always engage with. We had 17 surveys in our mailbox at town hall today, so pizzah.
Nice.
We're, you know, we're really starting to pick up a good amount of surveys, so I would say they're probably in, in the 200 or 300 range at this point, if not higher. Which sounds so miniscule for 12,000 people, but it's, it's a win in my book.
Did those surveys come from like one particular place or was that just kind of general?
Uh, I think that's general from having been dropped off. I mean, they're at the library, they're at the senior center.
Sure.
Uh, they're at the town beach, so they're, they're different places.
Yeah.
Uh, and plus there's the QR codes all over the place that people can scan.
The town beach was hopping yesterday, so that might have been the influx.
Cause it was hot. Uh, let's see. Uh, I don't want to miss anything. Really, I think as the steering committee gets going, that will also help give them some of these physical places to go. You know, as more people are there, they'll note some things that they thought they, you know, steering committee members feel would be good input. Uh, they're talking about the winter market down at, uh, Smokestack as a place they'd like to get to. In order to just again, increase visibility for groups that they might not always see. We still haven't really picked up our town social engagements like we had pre-COVID. So, you know, any, any opportunities and, you know, if you guys think of things that, that might be helpful or useful, uh, feel free to shoot them over and I'll, I'll pass them along.
Town fair and a bonfire, those would be nice.
Well, I mean, things that are actually happening that they can go to. I think those things will come up as, I, I think a lot of people are interested in bringing those back and they'll be a big part of what people talk about as, uh, we engage more.
A couple, I did attend that meeting as well and a couple other things that I took away. One was on the discussion of having that physical model of Lunenburg. I thought, uh, Mr. Bernie in that meeting brought up a great example of why we, why you would have this. And part of it is, part of this master plan is we're discussing things, and Adam, correct me if I represent you wrong. That you are discussing things like zoning and, um, that helps people see, not just see on a flat map where things go, but see what the actual physical barriers are between, uh, between different zones or other things. Uh, I don't think we've had any super recently, but we have had, and I think we've had some in the past few months, discussions about things like, oh, how is light from this particular, you know, someone wants to do a commercial development or something? How is light from that going to affect other people? When Bright Farms was looking, that was a big discussion about how the topography and location was going to affect, uh, light pollution. And I thought Adam's observation that when discussing zoning, things like this are relevant and a three, a 3D map of some kind helps people wrap their mind around it. Would you say that was?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the other, the question I had is they talk about multiple surveys. We see a second survey being issued in late September. Uh, I was kind of curi- like, I was curious what the exact logic was. I get why we'd be polling in general. Um, and the answer is both to drill down on details that come up from the initial high-level questions as well as kind of gauge public interest in some options and see where the, get, actually get a firmer fi- uh, finger on the pulse of what people are looking for. As well as also, we may discover that there are big picture items that we didn't, that, well, I say we, we, the board via over-under through their work, that they didn't ask that we have realized as a community are relevant and that lets them get those into. Any other, any questions or thoughts or comments we want to send back to them about the community engagement plan they've put forward?
I have a question, but holiday markets is, is listed as, uh, at attend events and I believe it's twice. Yeah. Is, is that the winter market you mentioned?
It is.
So, okay, are there more than, is there something else?
Uh, no, I think they're talking about it, doing it two years in a row. Going this coming December. Going this coming December and then
Oh, well, they, yeah, they.
Going back the following year as a, as a sort of follow-up to
Interesting. Thank you.
Ensure that they're sort of capturing that same group.
All right. So that was their community engagement plan. Um, Adam, if, I assume if we have any other questions, we can send them along.
Absolutely. Please do.
Uh, they, they were happy to have questions asked and happy to answer and happy to take input, so.
I have a question on the model.
Yes.
I, I did hear, I, I remember there being dimensions mentioned, but I don't remember what they were.
They haven't settled on that. I think they had some ideas. They were meeting this afternoon as a studio to start really honing in on what it was going to look like because I think what they realized is it's going to have to be at a scale where it needs to be able to be disassembled in order to transport it.
Well, okay. Um, I, I've got a further comment after that, but, so we've got twenty-six square miles, basically.
Correct.
And so to represent that even somewhat close to accurate, it's going to be like this tiny little microscopic thing.
I, I would expect we're talking something that's going to sit on that table out there and be able to have people around it or this table over here.
Okay.
Um, and what they were talking about today is ways to actually address the topography that would make it so people could understand it because the scale they're talking, it's going to seem minute and be like little bumps. So they were talking about exaggerating the Z-axis in order to really bring out those topographical differences.
So my additional comment was that, I don't know if anybody remembers it, but there used to be a model of Boston at the top of the Hancock Tower before nine eleven. It was a very large model. You could fit forty, fifty people in a circle around it. They had lights on it. They, they went through, they went through the filling of the back bay. They went through John Paul Rebe's ride. All kinds of different things with lighted things and an animation and, and, and monologue. I don't see any reason that we shouldn't have this on permanent display after the, right? And so I, I don't, I'm questioning the, 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 I, I mean, definitely would want to be displayed here and then at some other future permanent location. Uh, mobility would probably be an issue, but I'd like to see that be something that we can preserve and maintain as, you know, something similar to what used to be at the Hancock Tower.
Excellent addition.
Thank you.
I'm glad you said that, Mr. Allison. Thank you, because I had a similar thought and just kind of assumed that's what would happen and uh, you were wise for not making such assumptions.
I make myself that way plenty. I don't have to do it here.
Great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next up is solar bylaw.
Uh, I, I didn't get anything written on that. I did put some models in, or some models, some other bylaws in the drive. Um, I'm hoping to have something for the next meeting, uh, which I will be on vacation during. Uh, but prior to that meeting, I should be able to get something together for you. Please read through what's in the drive and if there's things that you're like, ooh, I really like that, or don't even think about putting that in there, let me know. There is, there's both a lot and not a lot out there. I think I found four. Uh, I know that Annie has been looking and she sent me a few that haven't made it in there. But out of three hundred and fifty-one, four to eight isn't a lot. They're all slightly different and I know that in discussing it with Brian, uh, the building commissioner, he sent me some thoughts that he dealt with when he was in Wilbur and that they came across that were problematic. So that'll be, those will be good, good feedback and good additions.
As a general note on this, I, I know that we've talked about it, recognizing that this is a bylaw change that could help businesses. Maybe of, we've questioned whether or not it could be economically feasible for smaller businesses. I, I will say this weekend randomly, I happened to drive by several smaller parking lot installations in, uh, in Massachusetts. Uh, definitely on the small business side where there was a, I, I can't tell you which town I was in. It was somewhere between here and Springfield.
Small geographic area.
But it was, um, but I did see a, a couple examples where, uh, one where it looked like a business had put it as the cover over their fleet, over their, whatever their fleet trucks were. For, looked like a handful of the box vans. And I saw a similar one that was just used as part, as looked to be limited parking at a real retail establishment. So I have seen, I, I've seen in action, I have no clue anything about them because I was driving with my boys, so I was certainly not going to stop and ask questions for a place that was probably closed on Saturday anyway. But, um, it was, I've seen examples of it in use at a smaller scale as well. And I'm guessing it was economically feasible in some capacity if,
If, yeah.
if it was done.
Yep.
Or maybe those people are very bad business. Okay, so we can review so, did anyone have a chance to review the solar and wants to give, um, feedback or specific talking points now?
I did not. I was traveling.
That's fair. I'll just state my personal goal. I'm hoping we can get something together for Fall Town meeting. Uh, because I'd love us to be able to help people about some of the money that's out there and get some of that federal money back in their pockets as opposed to someone else's.
Uh, as a follow-on to that, I think that's what, four to, four to six meetings before the war closes?
Yes, probably.
All right. Uh, driveways and entrances.
So I seem to have deleted the notes I had for the common driveway last time. Uh, so I apologize. I, I, I don't recall off the top of my head what we had discussed. I thought I had, um, moved them somewhere else and put them right and I hadn't. I'll have to go back and re-watch the meeting and, and do that and have that for you.
I was about to say if this would make sense, I was asking if this would make sense at table unless someone has something new to bring up.
I know the board was thinking about some items on there, so if anybody has anything uh, after reviewing it further, I'd be happy to take that into consideration.
Great. And the aquifer protection bylaw.
All right. So that you do have a copy of.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and this is actually, uh, a replacement for the watershed protection. I did send it to the building commissioner and the water district just for clarification. There were a few minor edits that the, uh, water district and DEP requested that we impart in there. Um, one is I missed a groundwater and I, I called it groundwater instead of water supply. And the other is DEP wanted an addition under section four point one that said any alteration to the zone two is required to be approved by DEP. And otherwise they all were in agreement that this would be an appropriate bylaw.
I had a couple of questions on this myself. But maybe for everyone's kind of edification, at a very high level,
Mm-hmm.
What does the, I know we've talked about it, but I could use the refreshers.
Yeah, absolutely.
At a high level, what does this change in practice from what we have now?
So it eliminates regulation within the zone three and within the zone one for the town's zoning. So the town's zoning bylaw would no longer regulate zone one and zone three. So zone one is the wellhead protection zone. So it's the immediate perimeter around the well.
Mm-hmm.
Believe it's four hundred or five hundred feet. That is regulated by DEP and is in most instances, in, at least in Lunenburg, owned or controlled by the water district. Really, in the zone one, you kind of can't do anything except like walking and boating and, you know, really low-key kind of stuff. In zone three, DEP doesn't require regulation any longer. Uh, in the early nineties, which is where our bylaw is from, that was something that DEP was focused on and wanted to do. Uh, and now in zone two, the biggest change is our existing bylaw is focused, well, focus, that's not the right word. Our existing bylaw prevents any impervious area greater than fifteen percent. Which I think we probably have more than a few places where that is, is exceeded. This allow, this limits you to fifteen percent without the introduction of a, an infiltration system that treats and infiltrates the water on site. So this would permit for dry wells and other infiltration methods as approved to allow folks to build above the fifteen percent. It would be a special permit through this board, which currently a lot of uses are codified as special permits through this board. Uh, we don't do a lot of them because most of what's being built in the zone two is residential. But even those, um, you know, and on a, on a one and two acre lot, fifteen percent lot coverage is, is a, is, gives you a fair amount, but there are places where I'm sure it could, we could push up against it pretty easily.
Well, it's, uh, whichever is greater, never mind, I would, the fifteen thousand or twenty-five hundred, and then I realize it's greater, not lesser, so that eliminates that question I was going to ask. So effectively for this as proposed
Mm-hmm.
kind of gives more property rights to people rather than less on the grand scale?
Correct. It contemporizes the, the regulations to allow people greater use of their property under conditions.
But the previously, there was no
Correct.
Would have just not been allowed.
That's correct.
Okay.
On the flip side of that, if I might add, um, it, it's also decreasing our protection of the environment and, and our local environment and, and protect, potentially our public health. Um, and, um,
So that's a, that's a concern that's, uh, for me personally, near and dear to my heart. I didn't gather that from this. It was that it was decreasing protection with the, uh, things we put in place. If you're willing to expand on that, I'd love more thoughts.
Well, the zone, so the zone one is wellhead, the zone two is aquifer and the zone three is watershed. So watershed is where all the rainwater that falls in a certain amount of area goes to that wellhead. So if you're eliminating the zone three protections that are actually in place and not being enforced by the town, by the way, which is what I heard, that's watershed, watershed is this big PFAS. Where is the PFAS coming from? Okay, uh, you've got contamination of wells. We've got stormwater permits that we're issuing that are absolutely useless. I just wanted to throw that out there. Enforcement, this section ten, do we have that currently in our bylaw?
I'm sure there is some enforcement.
Maybe we should look at that instead of changing the bylaw to conform to people that we already know are breaking it.
Well, I think, so I think the issue with that is that some of these violations are more than ten years old. So there is no enforcing them.
So how old is the bylaw?
Nineteen ninety-one.
Twelve? No, that's.
So I,
That's, that's thirty-two years old.
Uh, I guess that creates the question if we have a bylaw with people who have violated it eleven years ago. Well, uh, purely hypothetical, I'm not talking about any property. I have no clue on this.
Sure.
Why the flying heck wasn't it caught anytime in the time where it could have been enforced? What's going on there?
Uh, I mean, there could be a lot of reasons for it. If, if, so we'll use single-family home because that's probably, what I would, what I would gather is probably the most likely group of violators is single-family homes. If you have a single-family home and you've put up three sheds that don't require a permit and your house was already at X number eleven, twelve percent and you put up these sheds and a pool that you permit and there's a collection of things that get put in over the years that one person or another doesn't know about or doesn't calculate out because it's single-family, it's not.
Mm-hmm.
It's easy for that to, to build up. And then after, after ten years, there's no, there's no retroactive enforcement per statute.
Is that a state?
It is.
Is, is that something that we could be? Well, we can't be more restrictive. We can be, we can't be less restrictive. We can be more restrictive. So if we, can we do the retroactivity for twenty years? Because that would be more restrictive?
I would have to talk to council about that. I don't know. But my understanding of forty A is if municipal officials know of it, it's six years and there's no enforcement and it becomes essentially pre-existing non-conforming. If municipal officials don't know of it after ten years, it, it gathers the same.
Which municipal officials are we talking about?
Uh, I don't think that the statute necessarily speaks to that.
To nobody? Accountability and responsibility are not there?
Again, as I, as I understand the statute, I don't think it calls out a specific official.
Mm-hmm.
I think that.
And that, through the chair, that's just another reason that I'm not comfortable letting Boston dictate our town.
I guess the beginning of this, it does call out the building commissioner.
Any big shoes?
So I have a question. This is a little bit of a pivot, so finish your.
Yeah, hey.
I was looking at the disallowed uses, uh, prohibited uses. So I was looking at section, um, page five, section seven point one, on page five, it's F, the top of the page.
You know what? I'm just going to share this in case anybody is watching at home and wants to follow along.
I hope they are.
You said section six?
Seven.
Yep.
Prohibited uses, seven point one F, storage of liquid hazardous materials and liquid petroleum products unless such storage is above. products unless such storage is above ground level and impervious surface and either blah, 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 blah. However, these storage requirements shall not apply to the replacement of existing tanks or systems for the keeping, dispensing, or storing of gasoline provided the replacement is performed in a manner consistent with state and local requirements. I guess I'm a little confused about that because we say you made, our local requirement is you can't do this. And now we're saying, but you can, but if you're already doing it, now, I can accept the concept of pre-existing nonconforming. But it seems like we're saying, and then you can kind of just keep doing it, or are we not saying that because we're not allowing it? I don't understand that.
I think they're saying this is, that would be pre-existing nonconforming, because they're already there. So the replacement of them is a function of theoretically a technical upgrade. Because if you were to replace, if you're replacing gasoline tanks at a Sitgo, since there's no Sitgos in town, you're taking out a tank that's probably functionally obsolete, and you're putting in a now tank that is an upgrade and would be theoretically less likely to be damaging. You're probably taking out a single walled, you're probably putting in a double walled, you're probably putting in something that has an alarm float, you're probably something that has some sort of liquid ballast.
And by not allowing that, we would just be encouraging people to use the old thing until it creates an environmental catastrophe.
Correct.
All right. I hate it, but it makes sense.
I do like the way you posed the question, though.
All right. So we've heard, I had a few, a couple targeted questions about a specific section. Mr. Allison has raised some broader concerns about the watershed, which is no longer protected. I'm curious, is the, do we have a logic from DEP on why Zone Three no longer needs protection?
Because they want more people.
We don't. And, you know, frankly, if that's something the board's concerned about, then what I might recommend is we replicate something similar to what we have in the existing bylaw, where we come up with a set of uses. So in, I think it's Section Six, is the permitted uses. And perhaps, Section Six is those who are permitted, maybe the waterspace protection district is Zone One and Zone, or Zone Two and Zone Three. And we regulate Zone Three in the same way, where you get 15%, and then you need a special permit with infiltration. If that's a concern for the board, then there's nothing that would prevent you from doing that.
What are the current requirements for Zone Three in the town compared to Zone Two?
It's essentially the same.
Okay.
So I think there may be a few things that they're more likely to allow in a Zone Three, like they may allow new gas stations in a Zone Three. I would have to do a more detailed comparison between the two. I find the existing bylaw to be challenging the way that it's written because it has Zone One and it lists everything, and then it goes to Zone Two and it lists everything, permitted and prohibited. So it's really long, and it's easy to get lost in which section you are scrolling through. So I think there's ways to do it that would maybe compress it a little bit and tie things together. I still will say I don't think that we need to regulate Zone One, because those regulations are pretty tight from the DEP and from a wellhead protection perspective.
But if we were to extend this to Zone Three, it would, compared to what we have now, it would not really be putting additional burden on property owners in...
No, it would give them avenues to...
Yeah.
Seek relief.
It would make in some ways life easier for property owners in Zone Three, rather than what we have now. So it's, I will be transparent that I am absolutely thinking of this from the political angle of how do we make sure, how can we make a bylaw that is not only effective, but palatable in a broad sense, and that can't be easily targeted by people who want to get very angry about government grabbing control, there's times, in my opinion, that is a very fair concern. And there's times, I wonder if, I don't see it the same way as some people do, and I like protections. Okay. Do we have thoughts on that one way or another about including Zone Three? Or, we don't have to solidify this right now, but...
My thoughts or my beliefs at this point is that we do need protections in Zone Three. Like, yet PFASs are already an issue in town, and like, you know, the idea that we can't go back to people who've violated these 10 years ago, like, there's not a statute of limitations on how long PFASs last for. Like, once they're there, they're there. So anything that does get through, if it gets, you know, missed, then it is a problem later, and there's nobody to be held accountable for it. I am in favor of more protections rather than less.
I would agree with that. I suppose my question would be, is there a timeline on when this needs to be solidified?
By the time the warrant closes? If you're trying to do it in the fall, if you're trying to do it in the spring, then...
Got you, okay.
I mean, we're not under any obligation, but the bylaw that exists now has challenges.
Mm-hmm.
Good question. So, if I may, please refresh my memory. Didn't we go to town meeting with the bylaw revision for, was it just Zone One?
It was to change the map.
That was it?
That was it.
And it got shot down?
Yeah. I mean, it was caught up in the, because of the Zone One regulation that was included, it got caught up in the PFAS testing Hickory Hills issue because of the Zone One that exists at the Woodlands.
I remember the drama, I just didn't remember the facts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I guess, Mr. Allison, I would ask you as well, because you raise the concern. The more I chew it over, the more I fly out, straight up agree with you, I believe. But how would you feel about extending the protections we discussed for Zone Two to Zone Two and Three? Do you feel that would meet those needs effectively? I'm not looking for you to commit your soul to it this minute, but, like your general thoughts.
Not sure I have one of those. Yeah, no, I mean, I certainly wouldn't be disagreeable. I certainly would want to look at making some differences because there is a sizable difference in the areas that are covered, and there is a significant existing population in the two different areas. And, but at the same time, to back up and repeat myself, is, it's disgusting that we have had a bylaw and there is obviously known people that have been violating it. So I'm not quite sure why we need to keep changing things to suit people that are breaking the things that we're changing.
I will say, I don't have definitive proof that anybody has violated. I suspect that with that 15% cap, that there have been violations. I will also say that I think changing the bylaw isn't to address those who have violated it, but to give those who have been held back by it the opportunity to move forward with actions that are appropriate to allow them to do so. I think, to your point about the difference between Zone Two and Three, I agree that they are different and that the uses are different in each. And I think what makes the most sense is to do a comparison on the existing bylaw. And then if it's not evident that one is more permissible than the other, to look at the defined areas and identify if there are uses in Zone Three that we feel should be permitted, or that you feel should be permitted, that maybe wouldn't be otherwise.
Adam, would it be, I think it would, but I'll ask, would it be a low lift to send us that map again?
Hmm.
Just so we can kind of look at the PDF and review it?
Yeah.
Because I very, like, I have that vague notion of what it looked like, and I could probably go back through notes.
There's a goose on a potato in there.
Great.
I don't even need the map now. I remember exactly what it looked like. Goose on this potato.
So it sounds like Adam will send us the map, and we'll be able, and is it possible to send us just a quick summary of the distance or difference, or link us to the...
I'll send you a link to the bylaw.
That's correct.
And I'll let you twist your brains up trying to...
I like your approach there of trying to make us see and deal with what you have to deal with instead of our pretty version. That's, I think, fair.
And, I mean, I think, the comparison won't be too difficult, but I have some other things that I'm dealing with and working on that I want to, if you want it, I can give you the link, the analysis will take a little while.
I would be comfortable with the link, myself. I don't want to speak for others, but I know you are...
I'll get the analysis eventually.
Yeah. You are, in fact, one person.
It's my best effort sometimes.
I do have a, just a comment, is the first, the very first thing, purpose of district, it goes from A to C. Is it just misoriented, or is there a B missing?
Does A to C?
It goes A, C, D, E.
Oh, it does, look at that, huh? I'll have to look at that. My guess is, I did a PDF convert to Word, and sometimes that gets funky, or maybe I had a delete that I didn't realize I did.
Sure. But I mean, so to your recollection, there were only four things under that?
I believe so.
Okay. Scribner's error.
It seems to me like we've kind of petered out the discussion of this for tonight. For no particular reason, and not because I failed at plugging in my computer correctly and waiting for it to boot up so I can see the agenda again. I don't suppose anyone would just feel like mentioning what's next on our agenda.
Minutes.
Minutes approval.
Oh, minutes approval! There we go. We have four, thank you, we have four sets of minutes in, that we were sent because last meeting we did not have our minutes. Got it now, thank you. And these would be the minutes for our June 26th meeting, our July 10th meeting, the public hearing for 525 Chase Road, and the public hearing for Lot A, 524 Northfield Once people have had the opportunity to review, if they wish further, I would accept a motion.
I'll motion to approve the minutes for our, the planning board's June 26th meeting, the July 10th meeting, as well as the minutes for, the public hearing for 525 Chase Road, and the minutes for the public hearing of Lot A at 524 Northfield Road.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Move and second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Minutes are approved. Committee reports. We shall begin with the Open Space Ad Hoc Committee.
We have not met since our last meeting, I don't believe. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we have. We met to discuss the decision that we had made forwarded, and that the select board had already signed off on not exercising their first right of refusal. And so that was a very short conversation on that. And then we did have a discussion about the future of first right of refusal and the process, and I was very, very, very happy to hear the suggestion by the chair that they could make themselves available to have a joint meeting with the planning board next time first right of refusal comes up, and then we wouldn't lose that 30 to 60 days out of the 120 days we have to make a final decision and have everything dotted and crossed and signed off and paid for, which is absolutely ridiculous. It's way too short of a timeframe. So that was my biggest takeaway. I was very happy to hear that recommendation, or that forward request. So I thought it sounded like a fabulous idea.
Not that we need, not that we need a vote on it, but just to get, just get people's opinions. Would that, would we be amenable to having that joint meeting so we could make these decisions in a timely manner, I ask? Kind of telegraphing my opinion?
Absolutely.
Looks like you have a lot of assent and agreement on that.
Sweet. Well...
I mean, you can see that as well, but for the sake of people at home.
No, I think that's great, and I think it would save us a lot of time, it would, it would save a lot of wasted time spinning wheels and saying, well, I don't know, I don't know anything about it, but I'm supposed to make a decision and blah, 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 and I've got to tell these people that, and I think that's just ideal.
Well, please extend my thanks to the Chair of the Open Space Ad Hoc Committee, because that would be amazing.
Yes.
Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee.
We have not met since our last meeting.
Everyone knows how long some of these committee names are? Like, why say it in three words when you can say it in seven?
Building reuse. We already used that for seven years.
Ah, there we go. Agricultural Commission.
We were unable to secure meeting space because the Green Communities Tax Force took our spot, but no ill will, anyway. So we weren't able to have our meeting on a regularly scheduled date of last Thursday. We are in the works of trying to figure out a next meeting date. The 27th doesn't work for two of the members, so there's that issue. I would like to add about the farmers' market. Two out of the four markets that we've had in the last four Sundays got rained out. We did, however, have one trooper who showed up and stuck it out through the rain. So we have not, not had the market, but two of them got rained out. And I would also like to mention that our last market, last, yesterday, was amazing. There were, I believe there were nine vendors, and all nine vendors were directly resident from agriculture. The, the, the bubble, the Bubble Factory, they make goat's milk, so, so that's goat milk going in. And the Blue Bay people came and they were selling birdhouses, but everything else was edible and, and from the farm.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm resisting the urge to make a pun about the other committee wanting your space and being maybe a little.
No worries.
Green.
With envy.
No worries.
Nice pun, though.
No, thank you. I like how I said I was resisting it and then did it anyway, that's, that's my life. Capital Planning Committee. It is not Capital Planning Committee meeting season. So, no meeting. Economic Development Committee has not met since our last meeting, will be meeting on Thursday. Stormwater Task Force.
We were unable to address some things without the DPW Director there, otherwise it was mostly edification for myself on what we're doing and, and how some of the spaces work.
Great. MRPC.
We have not met since our last meeting, I think we're meeting on August third, soon.
And MJTC.
MJTC, we did meet, I think it was last week, the days are kind of swirling together at this point for me. I don't have my notes with me, but I don't think I took any notes, I think mostly we had presentations from Mass DOT on the same subject matter we had at the previous meeting, which was mixed transportation usage, and who needs what transportation where, and what's more popular, and what kind of cycles they're seeing within the transportation world of Massachusetts.
There we go. Just as a quick edification for our viewers at home, all three of you, I do wish, we should probably point out that MRPC is Monticic Regional Planning Committee, correct? And MJTC is Monticic Joint Transportation Committee, correct?
Correct.
Nice, my memory works once in a while. Well, that's it for committee reports, Director's item?
Uh, the only item I have is that I will be on vacation the week of the fourteenth, so I will be unavailable for the meeting.
All right. And I, I will also not be available that day for the meeting, so.
Speaking of going rogue.
Speaking of what?
Going rogue.
There we go.
I mean, you're welcome to meet.
If you wish to make a power play with no one to tell you no, and.
Oh, man.
Do it. I am probably legally obligated to say that I don't mean it.
Tell me no.
Go ahead. Meeting schedule. All meetings are held at Town Hall at six PM unless otherwise indicated. We've talked about the August fourteenth meeting, August twenty-eighth meeting is also out there. Ongoing items, is there anything from our ongoing items that you want to bring up, or that any of us want to bring up?
There is not.
All right. Is the town environmental support policy, the thing that Mr. Jeffries brought to us a while ago, and has gotten quiet?
Correct.
Do we know, uh? Do we expect?
I think, in general, it's gone quiet.
Okay.
Like, I think even at the select board level, I think they've been wrapped up in some other more pressing issues, and that has not come back around. I will have to get you guys, somebody to let you in on the fourteenth, because I don't think any of you have a key to Town Hall?
No.
All right. Public comment.
Make sure there's no public.
Yes, just make sure there's no waiting room or anything.
There is not.
And there's no public here. But we are your government officials, your comment is welcome, do come by and see us. Board comment or concerns?
I'd be remiss not to mention that Stan Barney, a long-term Luenberg resident, his, his services were yesterday, and it was with a very heavy heart that I went with my mom, and it was, it was a little uplifting to be there and, and see so many familiar faces. Stan Barney was a, a very well-respected and admired man in, in many circles, and he will be greatly missed.
Thank you. All right, with no other business, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.